Are we ready to try and proceed? Okay. Let me call the town of Washington September ZBAA to order then. My name is John Parisi. To my left is Fletcher Cottington. At my right is Peter Hodia. The three of us represent a quorum tonight, so you need three votes, all three votes to pass anything at this point. Okay. On the agenda, we have an application from Michael Clark and Wendy Wolf at 604 Burbank Road in Millbrook. Application to expand their current residence. The property's own RL5 and the existing structure is non-conforming as well as the lot is non-conforming. So before we get into that, I do have the minutes from the August meeting to approve. Any corrections, changes, alterations?
No.
I'll make a motion then to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Motion.
Motion by John, second by Fletcher, all in favor? Okay, approved. So with that, how do you want to proceed?
Thank you all. Apologies for being late again. Appreciate your patience. My name is David McGrennigan and I work for Sorka Concepts, our architecture firm, working with Michael and Wendy on a project. Tonight, we're going to present kind of the pre-existing non-conforming conditions and then our request for a variance for building area within the side yard setback. I have a little bit in the memo from Aaron and a subsequent memo from Sarah to who has left, so.
Time out. Sarah, you were at the planning board meeting.
What?
Did they give them a use variance for being in buffer area?
A use variance wouldn't be under the planning board. They did approve their site plan and everything had proceeded accordingly. It was the conclusion based on our analysis of Town Code Section 391 that deals with non-conforming uses is that that would not be applicable to this residential structure because the use has not changed. The use remains residential. It was residential, so.
But the fact that they're expanding in the buffer area, doesn't that constitute a new use?
That would not be a new use. The use is still the same as residential use. So what the ZBA needs to discuss and what's within your scope are the variances to accommodate the setback that's required for the wetland buffer and as Alicia and Aaron mentioned, also for the shed. But it's not that they're limited to an increase of the 25%. That section, it wouldn't apply here.
I think I should, the planning board, approve their wetlands permit pending a final approval of the planting scheme from.
That is correct. Thank you, Lisa.
Steve Moreno.
And Steve Moreno did send communication that he received that from the applicant. Thank you, because that's a major correction. That was approved and Steve Moreno has now approved the landscaping, so you have to go back before the planning board, correct, for full site plan or that was the only permit?
My understanding last from our meeting two weeks ago is that they said it was a conditional approval predicated on submitting an appropriate and approved landscape plan to approve by Steve Reno and then pending tonight's approval of the variance.
Okay.
And those are the two conditions that I took away from it.
And him visiting the site for three years to be sure about our plantings.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Any comments now at this point?
No, because I was trying to get a clarification of what happened at the meeting. Leave it to the public hearing or afterwards, please. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm going to stand on this side, so I can hold the paper back hopefully for everybody else. So this site plan is kind of our coverage diagram, which as we can see, there's a total coverage in the lot of 4.3%, which is well under allowable. There is total 3,184 square feet within the side yard setback of building coverage. I'll talk to building coverage and floor area tonight just to clarify both of those, which is 0.9%. So that is the existing building coverage, which includes the existing house. There's an attached side yard porch and there's hardscape paving in there. So by definition of the Town Code, those are all the items that constitute our building coverage. So as it relates to the proposed building coverage, well, there's the allowable, which is a significant number. So by comparison, we show what is there and then by right, if we left all of that alone and didn't touch it, theoretically, we could build that. Obviously, we would not want to, because it would not be sensitive to the area, but by the zoning code, that's what's allowed from a building coverage standpoint. And that would be a total of 32,000 square feet of building coverage, which includes driveways, motor courts, terraces, all those items. Then as it relates to our proposed, our total coverage is 15,000 square feet, which is a 0.5% increase total for the whole site. Within the 75-foot side yard setback, there is 2,815 square feet, so that portion of the terrace there increases us by 0.8% of total building coverage and setback, the majority of which is that covered portion of the heart of the uncovered portion of the hardscape terrace. And then within the wetlands buffer is 4,088 square feet, which is a 1.3% coverage.
You have a diagram that blows up and shows where the buffer is relative to your building structure?
So the blue dash line.
I can't see it from there. I'm sorry. You're either going to have to come up here and provide a bigger thing because I can't see from there.
Okay.
And I refuse to be, you know.
Sure. Is that acceptable if I take it down?
Do you have another one right here? Is this another set of prints?
Is that the on file?
I don't know.
That probably is your engineer's site plan. I don't think it's the same graphic that David's showing us.
Is there a blow up with this?
Not of those particular plans, no. We just have the overall site and the areas.
I think you just move them to the table.
Okay.
We don't have that in our list.
No.
Okay.
Oh, you should. Sorry, I apologize. I thought you were saying you did not. We submitted this as a part of our application.
In the future, don't shrink them.
Okay.
Because I have to use this to read your stuff.
Okay.
It takes me a whole lot longer and puts me in a bad mood.
All right. Apologies. So the blue, our color coded blue is for wetlands and then we have color coded red for the side yard setback. So blue is the detached garage, the attached cottage, the existing main house structure. So these two are connected by walls, hardscapes and some foundations.
So that's your 100-foot buffer?
That's our 100-foot buffer there, correct.
And where's your line for the 75-foot?
That is this red dash line cutting across through here. So as you can see, almost the entirety of the structure is within the 75-foot side yard setback currently. The only exception really is this.
Now, why do you flip to what you're proposing? So now I'm at a loss.
So what we are proposing is that we actually take this eastern edge of the existing house and pull it back about nine feet from the pond edge and we are otherwise utilizing the rest of the existing building envelope that is within the 75-foot side yard setback. And then the existing cottage is right in the center under my thumb and we are then extending and connecting this. We're demolishing that. This is all addition within the by right buildable zone, but within the 100-foot wetland buffer.
So if this is the 75-foot side yard variance, I don't see where it goes into the new construction.
The new construction is beyond all of that, but we are renovating the existing structure that is within there, meaning we're removing a lot of the walls and then re-roofing the structure.
Yes, all within the wetland setback.
Correct. And so the planning board met on the wetlands because I think the wetlands law.
So we are asking for a setback for this building here then?
We are asking for an area variance for the existing structure, which is within the side yard setback, which was built in 1976, which is after the adoption of the code in 1971. Because it was built after, that's why it's not a special permit. There was never a variance granted for that existing structure. It's just always existed, kind of unlawfully in that setback. So we are now asking for an area variance for that existing structure.
Okay, so what's the distance to the side yard then? I don't see that.
From the far corner?
No, from the nearest point of, to the property line.
I don't believe we dimensioned it because we didn't change it.
Well, if you're asking for a variance for that, that's the number that we would need.
I believe that's on the civil site plan on 302, the zoning table on Sunday today. We're talking about the side yard setback. We have an existing side yard setback requirement of 75 feet. The existing is 42 feet and the proposed is 43 feet. So what David was describing was the reduction of the building's square footage that's within the side yard setback. That's getting pulled back nine feet. It actually reduces the existing non-conforming side.
So you're asking for that building then for a 32-foot variance?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that didn't, that never moved. It was just, it was just never.
Correct.
It's, that point, someplace along there is the closest point.
That is correct.
So they're really asking, then let me just summarize. They're asking for a side yard setback for a building that was constructed sometime in the past that was never given a variance previously.
Correct.
And all the rest of that, new construction does not apply?
Correct.
This is outside the 75-foot setback line?
That is correct.
You concur? Okay.
I have a question about the septic fields.
Hang on for a minute. No, no. They're also asking for, keep going to the next print now.
Sure. So kind of slide these out of the way. So that was our building coverage. Then as it relates to our existing floor area, because there's floor area calculation by the zoning code includes the basement and the main floor and occupiable spaces if you were to have an attic over seven feet six inches tall. That's a diagrammatically V show. I'm actually going to skip ahead to the red diagrams. Because our current existing total square footage is 5,889 square feet for the house and attached cottage and the detached garage, I'm not including in that, but just the house and the cottage, the existing structure.
Why including the cottage in it?
Because it's attached through structural walls that connect through the front here and then the terraces.
Wait a minute. Time out then. The cottage was built in 1940, correct?
Correct.
This structure was built in 1974.
76.
76. So these two are attached?
Through a wall and a doorway that connects them at the front and then goes to the open terrace.
So if they're attached, then doesn't the 370, 391 apply?
I don't believe that it would apply even if they were attached.
I don't know why you keep saying it's attached. I get wet when I work through those.
But there's an existing structural wall. So when we met with James, the zoning administrator, as a part of the interpretation of what is connected, what is part of one structure versus a separate, he said they are structurally attached. So by my, by his reading of the code, there's unattached structure, those two are one and the same. To your point, they are separated. They're not connected by a roof, but there's a continuous foundation, continuous wall. So he said from an area standpoint, they're grouped together as one structure.
Are you with me, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just looking at my notes from the planning board about the non-conformity. Because I don't believe that the cottage was brought up before the planning board.
We talked about it from a building coverage and a floor area as a part of our calculations. But it was, so it was a part of the conversation in terms of what is within the wetlands buffer because that entire structure is within the wetland buffer. So when we talked about building coverage and floor area within the wetland buffer, that was a part of the calculation of existing conditions. And then when we showed the demolition of that and then the new addition, we factored that in when we talked about the increase of 12 square footage in total building coverage.
Yes, and I still think that the point stands with 391, that it's a non-conforming use of the land and I understand.
It's a non-conforming building also.
And I'm, yes, and I understand that the language is a bit clunky in the code, but the purpose of the non-conforming statutes are the use of land, buildings and other structures. So to me, the better example is when you have a commercial district that becomes residential or vice versa, and that's a zoning change, like that's a change in the use of the zone. And here, and our position would be that because the use has not changed, the use of this cottage has not changed, the use of the residence did not change, so that that section would not be applicable. I understand that there was.
But if they're attached, doesn't the 25% rule kick in?
But is that when, is the cottage is changing? I don't think it applies at all to this residential use in a residential zone for a residential purpose. And I know that the language can be challenging, but the purpose of that statute is a non-conforming use of a structure. The use here does not change. It's always residential. I mean, the case law supports that position too. There was nothing that was found that would say changes such as these to a residential structure would, would kick off the non-conforming use requirements. I mean, you're welcome to interpret it however the ZBA wants. That's just your legal advisor giving you our opinion on what that statute is meant to do.
Okay.
And what it's meant to control.
If those two structures are attached, what's the total square foot area of those two?
The total floor area of those two is 5,589.
5,589?
Square feet, correct.
Okay. Okay, keep going.
Those are existing conditions and then our proposed conditions for floor area. That is where we've peeled back nine feet on this edge and maintained the other boundaries here and we've demo, demolished, are proposing to demolish the deck that's partially covered over here, which is part of coverage, and then proposing a new additional wing here. All of the proposed addition is within the 75-foot limit of the zone. Total area of the main house is, the floor area is 6,100 square feet, which is a total increase of floor area of 8.4.
Where's that for the garage?
The garage is now attached.
Yep. So what's the square foot of that?
So that, the code tells us that if it's, I don't know that the square footage is exactly off my head because the code does not tell us that the floor area of an attached garage counts. Current zoning law says if it's a detached garage, you count the floor area. If it's attached, you do not. So I don't know off the top of my head.
Chair, to your point also, if that cottage was built in the 1940s, then any increase that occurred from that cottage would have been likewise limited by the 25%. And no ZBA, no planning board has enforced that, right? You have a very substantial house where that cottage was the only thing to exist prior to the zoning code being enacted. So I just think that the precedent also shows that this law was not applied to previous development when this house was even built, where it could have been limited to 25%. Does that make sense? I'm only asking you. I know, I know how Howard feels about it.
I think I know what you're saying. You're saying that the, for that, the current main house should have gotten a 25% variance when it was built also.
No, I'm saying that nobody has applied it because it isn't how it's meant to be applied. So if it was going to be applied, it would have been done back in the 70s when the house was built. If, if what you're saying stood, that this house never should have been built to this size anyway. But I don't think that that's how the law was written. It's to stop non-conforming uses. And uses is the operative term in the use of a land building or structure. So just to think about that in terms of that this code has been around and that limitation has never been applied. And I think it'd be hard for us to find it applied. What's that?
To this particular property because the 25% code thing has been applied.
I mean, it wasn't applied here.
To non-conforming lots in this township in the past.
Perhaps that it was and maybe it was in the 70s. I don't know that that would have been the proper application.
As I can recall, when it's coming in front of this board, that we talked about 25% enlargement many times in the past.
And I think if it's a use and the use is changing and the use is increasing, that's a different analysis. But here, you only have a residential use in that.
Well, this was for residential uses. People applied for a variance on the 25% restriction.
But what is worth, my reading of the zoning code, I agree with your counsel in that it's the increase of a non-conforming use. So if you have a restaurant in a residential zone, you're not allowed to increase the square footage, the building use or anything associated with that up to 25%. Is that, that's where you need the expansion of the use. You're not allowed to go beyond 25%. You're allowed to go up to 25% with a variance, but that's only applied when you have a non-conforming use, again, a restaurant, something of that nature in a, in a zone that is not permitted in, under your normal rule of use. In this instance, residential use, residential use. Sounds way out of the question.
The way we've been applying it?
No. And as a part of our review with James throughout this process, when we looked at different iterations and configurations, we asked about that condition because we were worried about that 25% rule. So I think that's why we've strived hard to also meet that requirement if that had come into play because it wasn't certain.
What's the square footage of the garage? You seem to have the best handle on everything.
I don't know. I think we only had block coverage on our civil plan. The existing garage.
Let him look for that. Keep going.
I don't believe so.
The last part about floor area then would be pertinent tonight in terms of the area variance within the side yard setback, the existing conditions. Within the side yard setback, there's 3,889 square feet of floor area. Because we are cutting it back, the proposed reduction would be a total of 3,700 square feet, so it's a 4.9% reduction within the side yard setback. These are, these are our floor area diagrams within the wetland buffer. So if you wanted me to talk to the area within the wetland buffer, I could. But I understood tonight was primarily about the side yard.
Let's see the new construction in the wetlands.
The new construction within the wetlands is his proposed outline here. And our floor area within the wetland existing is 5,559 square feet of floor area.
Repeat that number again?
5,559 square feet of floor area. The proposed is 5,170 square feet within the wetland buffer, which is a reduction of 6.9%.
And this structure is going to be basically terrace, right?
Pardon me, a terrace?
Yeah, I mean, what, you're talking about house structure or terrace structure or what?
The floor area was only the house structure.
Okay.
And then the building coverage where we started included the terraces based on the zoning code definitions of each. And so the reason for having any of this within the wetland buffer at all was because of the existing structure there and trying to connect to it. And through our conversation with James, the alternative to put it outside the wetland buffer would have been to extend the structure within the side yard setback and increase non-conformity relative to the side yard setback and the advice we got.
Why are you saying we'd increase the non-conformity?
Because the setback line is right through here. It's this dash line. It's the only way to connect to a structure here would have been to extend within, on that side, the plant's south side, your side of that dash line to then connect over. And we felt like the.
Why couldn't you move that whole structure out and do an L-shaped foyer approach?
That was something we talked about and the advice we were given through conversation was that increasing the non-conformity in the side yard setback is something we should not pursue.
You keep saying setback, but I don't see the setback as right there, which that whole thing seems to be outside of the setback.
This piece is, yes.
So.
And so the only way, if we had taken this piece and slid it over.
Slid it forward, yeah.
Then to connect it, we would have continued to connect this way, which would have increased area and increased impervious space in the backside.
But you're nowhere near the coverage of the site.
No.
So why don't you move the whole structure outside of the wetlands?
Because I don't want to.
That's not the reason. Financially, what's the impact to doing it?
I didn't plan it.
You didn't plan it?
It'd be another year and a half of replanning probably, right? The site as it exists has a view of the pond. Women have a view of the pond.
You have a view from the main house?
No.
No, that's what.
I think the point, the point being that the existing, the existing proposed house addition is entirely out of the side yard setback as the purview of the ZBA. The addition is within the wetland buffer that the planning board has already reviewed and approved as the impact to the buffer. So the way that the house is now being added to effectively is entirely out of the side yard setback, which was the preference of the zoning administrator. We went to the planning board, discussed the implications of impacting the wetland buffer, which through planting plan, through zoning management, ultimately, they determined based on our plan, that there's a net benefit to the fact that the plan as presented within the buffer is the best case scenario. To ask the owner applicant to completely demolish their house, impact the area within the buffer during demolition and then impact additional soils and everything to completely move their house outside of the zoning buffer from a 1976 building that was constructed within the side yard setback and outside the buffer is, I think, kind of arbitrary. So I would say this is the best case scenario for them, again, previously approved through the planning board for the, within the wetland buffer. That's not what we're really looking at here, really looking at.
Okay, then I'll throw out another. The most optimal solution is to take and increase the lot size by buying a section from the neighbor.
Why increase the lot size?
Because then, because you can make the lot conforming, you don't need a variance. So there's an alternate way of achieving what you want without getting a variance.
The alternate way would be for them.
Have you approached the neighbor? Neighbor's got, what, 40, 50 acres and he's not using it there? Why not?
Why not? Because we didn't know this wasn't approved when we bought the house, to be honest. We didn't know what was in this hole. Whoever built the house in the first place.
You didn't get a, a search done?
What do you mean a search?
Normally, when you buy a property, you do a search. And the title search comes up with saying you're buying a non-conforming property and the house is non-conforming.
I don't recall. We must have. That's sort of standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
The house was assumed in.
So I think, we should back up a little bit. Again, really, the thing that we're looking at here is we've got an extremely non-conforming structure that is within the side yard setback.
Yes.
The proposed building.
Okay, forget the proposed building.
No, no, I mean, the proposed, let's call it for the, for the purposes of the requested variance because of the way that legal. because of the way that legal has advised us to move forward with this ZBA is that if we, we now are coming for an area variance for a structure that was constructed post-zoning, 1976 was never issued a variance, should have at that time. Right now, they're trying to put an addition on the house that does not increase the non-conformance. It's been approved for the wetland impacts as within the buffer. We're decreasing the non-conformity by reducing the building size to go from 42 feet to 43 feet. Ultimately, that is the request here to decrease the non-conformance. Ultimately, you could, one could construe this as an existing non-conforming building that has increased in size less than 25% if you want to apply this type of permit situation again. Based on the very thoughtful architectural design, the thoughtful process in stormwater management and property improvement for the wetland consideration, this is the best plan that maintains the existing structure and the integrity and cost and everything that comes along with trying to maintain the amount of house that they have there. And expanding upon that to reduce the non-conformance and the impact to the environment with demolishing the entire structure, all of that. That is really ultimately big picture of what they're here for.
Chair, so to a few key points are that the wetlands law was enacted in 2011. So no variance would have been needed. It only became, a variance would have only been required after that point. When the structure was built, there was no wetlands law. So everything was fine. There was no need to deviate from the zoning code. So we're only coming to this now because laws have been enacted relatively recently that would mandate the area variance. So because the structure is changing, it's standard practice for anybody now to bring it into compliance. So the way to do that is to get an area variance. I think it would be egregious to say, you know, move a house that's been there since 1976, even the footprint of it, um based on a change in the law. I, I don't know that a court would uphold that. I do think it's a legitimate question to ask about buying a neighboring property to see if you can decrease the non-conformity, but given the size and given that the structure has had no impact on any neighboring properties, there have never been any complaints. While I think it's legitimate, I think it does find in favor of the applicant as far as, you know, expanding the size of a very large property. Which is my feedback on those points that you asked about.
Okay, let's try the, the barn.
The, the shed here, the woodshed and the trash enclosure. Um, and that would be an additional 148 square feet of coverage and floor area for an accessory structure, an accessory used to the principal building within the side yard setback.
What's the distance from the uh?
Um, I do not, I do not know. I could probably scale it, but it would not be as accurate if I thought of it in AutoCAD with hard dimensions on it.
Okay. I mean, even one second.
Yeah, the septic fields um are well within the 75 foot setback.
They are, we are proposing to remove those and move new ones into, I guess, within the 75 foot side yard setback.
Well, I noticed on the, on the plate here that you own the land that is next to the septic tanks or whatever. So if you just got a lot line adjustment there and added the land that you need to put the septic tanks in to the current lot, that would alleviate that problem. Which is just, you know, you gotta pay a lawyer.
Well, the, I'm sorry, is that for the septic tank that you made?
Yeah, the, the leach field.
The, the existing leach field, so if you're looking at.
It's a both septic fields with. Of the, of our.
Oh, your, your zoning, your side yard setbacks, your setbacks don't apply to septic. That's your structure, principal structure. So the, the Department of Health has a 10 yard setback, 75A, and the Dutch National Department of Health has a 10 yard side yard setback for an absorption field. Your zoning code for 75 feet, that's for a structure.
Okay.
Not an underground.
Okay.
This was actually reviewed and approved by the.
Okay, so county blessed this.
Yeah, run, run.
Well, it seems to me that there's a bunch of numbers missing. For this shed.
The other question I had relates somewhat to uh, to Fletcher. Uh, you're removing the current, you're abandoning the current septic tank and you're putting a new one in, right?
That's correct.
Where are you putting the new one?
The new septic field is.
Not the field, the tank.
Okay.
The tanks are to the south, so the existing um.
Do you have any civil plan handy?
Civil plan, yeah.
Yeah, use yours.
Yeah, it's actually fairly easy to see. Uh, you know what, I don't know. We actually showed this.
I, I didn't find it.
Because we had. No, we just show the field locations. So the existing tanks.
The existing tank you had someplace down here.
Tank up here, correct. We're actually, because of, we're coming out the bottom of the, the basement, they're going to be adding a bathroom to the basement. The existing septic tank, or I'm sorry, the proposed septic tank would go here and then a pump chamber, and then the pump chamber would actually come out and around and go to the existing.
So the tank and the pump uh are in the wetlands?
They're in the wetlands.
And you've got redundancy on that uh pump system and the alarm system?
Correct, that's all Department of Health purview, but yes, it's a duplex alarm system.
Okay. And what are you doing for the water from the gutters on the roof?
So that's all been um part and parcel to the wetlands permit that we went through with the planning board. So here's our grading and drainage plan. So we have um kind of patio areas that have yard pickup drains. All of those are connected through underground stormwater management. And then we've got a bioretention area, which doesn't currently exist. So just to talk about what currently exists, everything hits the roofs, they run out, kick out with roof leaders that just discharge to grade, right, adjacent to the house, which everything based on existing topography rolls down to the pond. Now, everything for by and large Plan East and True East is collected through either planting bed pickups, through um patio drains, all through a system to come to a bioretention area, which is essentially like a rain garden, but.
And then the old, the existing structure also.
Correct, yep, that's all roof leadered and picked up and goes to the bioretention area. And then essentially everything kind of in the northwest portion of the addition gets picked up and goes to a dry well because they've got extremely permeable soil, it's run of bank gravel for days. So all of that goes to the dry well, as well as the parking lot pickups and the trench drain across the garage. So that was where ultimately the planning board kind of was like, you know, you're adding impervious surface to within the wetland area, but because of the extensive planting plan restoration essentially of the buffer of the wetland area, the stormwater management practices, it was a net benefit. So that was all approved.
And that's the three-year deal with Steve to come out and check that the.
Just to make sure they plant everything they say they're gonna plant, yeah.
There's no follow-up to check every so many years or something?
I think it's a three-year period. I mean, they're, they're intent to.
No, it's steady, yeah. Their intent is to. Three, three years and then five years after that, I think.
Yeah, right, I mean, right now it's lawn all the way down to the pond. So it's basically mold grass. So the clerks are intending to kind of beautify the whole area with wildflower plantings and wetland plantings. They've got a landscape architect involved who's developed a pretty extensive planting plan to reactivate the whole area. Basically Plan East.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I noticed one thing on the print, it's that you're gonna have chains rather than leaders for your gutters. And I've been, I'm a partisan, I've been working on a lot of houses around here and I've seen the chains. And I see them freeze and I see them take the gutters off the side of the house. Just word of advice.
I think we have, I think we have down leaders, we might have had a quirky graphic or something.
All right, well, I read chains on the garage.
Okay, oh, the garage we did because it's the deep overhang over the doors, that is correct. That's correct. But we're open to changing that.
Well, you know, it's, I. I have no, no official thing about it, it's just that.
It's just an FYI, we have them in, it's a new topic.
Okay, any more questions on their construction plan here?
No.
No. Okay. I'll make a motion then, open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Fletcher, all in favor. Aye. Howard?
Okay, uh, we are here to ask for an interpretation of what happened, uh, as happens. And so that's the first thing. It started with Ed Jorgensen in August, who said that he was concerned about construction in wetlands. He wasn't sure what that meant and if it was allowable or not. So that's why they were scheduled to come here in the beginning. That's the initial reason that you're seeing them, Ed Jorgensen. Ed Jorgensen's concern about construction in wetlands buffer. So now I have a slight disagreement with Sarah on what the code says. I gave you a copy, a short version of the code. And it's basically says that non-conforming usage of land buildings and other structures may be continued in accordance with the following provisions. And if nothing was done, everything that's there would be pre-code grandfathered and there would be no issues about that, except maybe a septic tank might be an issue. There was putting a septic tank in the wetlands buffer post-wetlands law is probably not allowed normally to be put elsewhere. And it probably could be put elsewhere. So that, that's a small point. But the actual point is the applicant is asking to enlarge a building. So it's not the fact that the building is residential. It's the footprint of the building that became non-conforming when the wetlands law passed. So we're saying that the only thing that is allowed is making it any larger of the footprint in the wet, which is the area footprint in the wetlands area, which became a problem only after the wetlands law was passed and if you want to enlarge the footprints. Doesn't matter if it's a residential building or a barn or anything else. It's a structure in the wetland that has a footprint in the wetland. So what we're saying is the only thing, we would prefer, by the way, that you sort of reconfigure the plan to move more of the new construction outside the buffer, which, not the engineer, but it looked like it could be done. You could come in outside the buffer and connect and none of this would be happening then. And you could have your existing building where it is. But it's the addition and that's the problem. So if you reconfigure the addition, you'd be outside the buffer, but we're not addressing that. We're addressing the fact that this is in the construction that they want is in the buffer. It's the area footprint that they're locating in the buffer. Not the fact that the building is residential, the building could have been commercial, it could have been a barn. It doesn't make any difference. It's the footprint in the buffer that they're enlarging. And that's, that's the issue that we want interpreted. We believe that there's only one building in that complex, the one that was built in 1940, that would qualify for Section 7, where you get a 25% increase. Because that's what it said, only things that predate uh the seven, uh whatever date is exactly in 1971 are subject to the 25% increase, up to 25%. All of the other structures are prior to 19, past 1971 and are not subject to being allowed an increase. So if it turns out that with what they're taking off on one side of the building and what they are proposing for the 1971 building, for 19, 1940 building, the pre-1971 is sufficient, that construction could probably be allowed in the wetlands buffer on, under the code. Anything else beyond that, uh, probably shouldn't be put in the wetlands buffer. If you're interpreting the code, and that's what we're asking for, is an interpretation of the language as it is written. And to reiterate, uh, we think it is the surface area that is, uh, that is the basis for the code, not the fact that the building is a residential use. That has nothing to do with the footprint on the wetland. It's the surface of the building, the square footage in the wetland buffer that is the issue. So.
Howard, so when you say the, are you, you want to have a CAC?
Yes, this is a CAC, it's discussed this. I am as a member now presenting a letter.
Correct.
Asking for, asking for you to consider this interpretation, which we've done in the past. The CAC has, you know, already said it would prefer this to be moved outside the buffer, the new construction.
Okay, Sarah?
It already came up that they wanted to use the 7% rule. So this is nothing, nothing new. It's just a question of the numbers and how, how they apply.
So is this with regard to the current application? Because the, the work within the buffer and the plan is proposed has been approved by the planning board. So are you looking for an interpretation on this project or just?
The planning board sent, sent you originally in August 3rd meeting by a planning board chair who was concerned about the amount of construction in the buffer. And then it was put on the agenda for here.
But Howard, wasn't, didn't the planning board then, wasn't there been a conversation and a determination that that in fact, that was not within the purview of, of the zoning board, that the zoning board would be voting on the question?
No, I don't believe it was, I don't believe they said that.
I think that was the determination of, of the planning board.
I think they approved, you know, Steve Moreno's uh plan.
They, they approved that and they determined that, that what they would be asking for in the ZBA was just the question that's reported to the ZBA today and nothing else. There was discussion earlier and then there was further discussion among the, the, excuse me, the planning board about the fact that that was not within the purview of the ZBA.
That's why we're asking for an interpretation. That's the purpose of the letter I sent in, for an interpretation of that. Otherwise, uh, it wouldn't be in front of the ZBA at all.
No, no, they would because of the question of variance, not, not because of what you're suggesting about the property.
And it's a question of.
Planning board determine, I'm just trying to keep everybody's, you know, the, the lanes of each of the different boards um of what the questions are for them.
Yeah.
And um, I don't know, I'm returning to legal counsel. I'm, I'm actually just being honest, I guess, I don't know why I'm in here, but I just thought it would be helpful to provide that background since I was president of those meetings as well.
Um, so at the planning board meeting where they determined and granted the wetlands permit, the same discussion came up, the same points were made. Um, in an effort not to be redundant, I did provide the legal analysis that I provided earlier that the code references a non-conforming use of land buildings and other structures. Um, and that it's only going to be, 391 is only triggered with a non-conforming use. So regardless of the wetlands law being enacted, the use, contrary to what's being advanced by the CAC, the use has not changed. So it was our position that a special permit was not needed and that is what the planning board thought. And then they were in agreement that 391 was not applicable, they did not have to wait for a special permit. What is before the ZBA are area variances. If the CAC would like an interpretation, um, I think they're well within their authority to ask the ZBA for that. I do not believe that they can ask it in the middle of a review of an application. Um, it would be a request that they could submit and then you could evaluate that on its own terms and provide an analysis. Um, but here, an issue are just the requested variances um for this application.
I have a question, are, are we trying to reverse the wetlands approval? Is that what you're?
No, it's.
There's no authority here to do that.
That's what I'm confused about.
You're asking for a surface area, an area, this is an area variance.
The approval for wetlands, do we still need approval for wetlands today?
No.
The only thing before this.
So today we need approval for setbacks.
Yes.
An area in the setback and that main structure that exists.
No, yeah, I don't think we need an area in the setback at all.
Because the main structure's in the setback, but the added is outside the setback.
The area of non-conforming is decreasing in the setback, the, the non-conformance is decreasing.
Because you're renovating the existing, that's why we're having a, a discussion, right?
No, because this structure was built without getting a variance on the first place.
Because it's a lead one, it's a lead one because 2011.
Yes, so now that you are changing it, you will need a variance or that area that isn't. The wetlands keeps coming up.
Right.
And the same arguments will be made because the, the same law is kind of at play, the wet. And the same arguments will be made, because the, the same law is kind of at play. The wetlands are still involved here, but in a different way. You already have a permit from the planning board to build what you want to build. Now you need approval from the ZBA for that distance that you go into the buffer. Because there's a setback that you're going to need an exception from, and that's what they're here to reach.
Right. And it looks like the section that's within the setback is the existing structure that we're shrinking, but renovating. And so that's the issue. Because everything else is outside of the setback.
No, the woodshed, the woodshed.
The woodshed, the woodshed.
Yeah, the shed, if you don't have numbers on the shed.
We do.
I have the exact number. At the square footage, I don't have the distance to the proper line.
It's, it was like.
And that's what you, you definitely will need to get them, the numbers, because they're not gonna, I think that's.
It was somewhere in the ballpark of forty-five to fifty.
Yeah, we, we, like, it just.
I don't know why we don't have.
Why we don't build the sheds?
We don't have to build the shed. I, I think the other thing, just for background too, and I, again, we're not debating the wet, I mean, the, the planning board talked about the wetlands case. But just for background for the ZBA, Steve Marino did point out that, I guess, the pond, that there is a body of water and not technically a wetlands up. It, it's connected to wetlands upstream. Um, that was another point that he made to the planning board, is sort of how he felt comfortable with the um with the, the wetlands permit because of the plantings, and because it was actually his view of creating a better environment, and that those questions were the planning board members.
Right.
And I believe that was, to your point, there's an interpretation, because the wetland law said that the applicant's entitled to the wetland permit if proposed activity will not negatively impact the wetland water course or water quality found to have a positive advantage.
So it also says further on, ahead of that, first, can you build it elsewhere? We're under the impression that you could build it slightly elsewhere, move it slightly. So that comes first, that's the.
I don't disagree with you, Howard, but we're back to really dealing with just two area, possibly two area setbacks right now.
But you're dealing with area, this is the point of interpretation. The footprint is an area. It's not, it's not the fact that it's a residential use. It's an area footprint that became subject to the wetlands law when the wetlands law passed. They want to make the footprint bigger now, the area of the footprint bigger. And that's the interpretation part. If it falls under the section seven and they have enough usage to do what they want, because they're taking area out elsewhere, then it's a done deal. If it's not.
There's one thing I think that is pretty obvious to me looking at this topo, is that there's a great height difference between the height of the pond and the height of the buildings. And as far as I understand it, wetlands are delineated by certain soils and certain vegetative matter. And if the soils and the vegetative matter are not on this hillside, then that is not a wetland.
Well, there's hydro soils that they didn't put on the map, that they didn't mention them. Wetlands have a hydro soil buffer as well.
And so to go back to what Leslie said, it was a water body would be included in that as well. So the distance from the water body. But the area going down to the pond has been manicured and landscaped and maintained for as long as they owned the home. So that's, Steve Marino was satisfied with concessions as far as certain vegetation and landscaping. Um, again, not an issue before you, but for background information.
Yeah, and just so that the board's aware, that Ryan C one oh one, on the existing condition civil site plan that does have wetland flags, that delineated the wetland along the boundary, which does have a, a slight buffer and it is essentially based on the hydro soils characteristics. The hydro soils that you see on the USDA soils map are from a satellite view, quite literally. Um, so when we go on the ground and actually take core samples and see where the hydro soils exist, when you're dealing with a manicured bond like that, that's what delineates the line. So it's kind of what I record because there's an impacted site where it's been mowed, you don't have native vegetation showing the hydrology, the vegetation, the hydro soils characteristics. We rely heavily on the soils. And that's where, what you see is the boundary, you know, taking core samples back and forth to identify the line. That's there, that's the line from which the regulated buffer that the town regulates was determined for the wetlands law. Again.
Okay.
I, I think that's neither here nor there, because the house is in the buffer to the wetlands. But just so that you have kind of a full picture on what's, what's, it's based on. You know, the whole, pretty much the whole existing structure is within the wetland buffer.
Right.
So again, we're, we're talking about variances here. Is there a way where, if the board were to entertain an approval, is there a way to condition the approval on the, the, based on my scaling here, the woodshed is not increasing the non-comformance. Uh, the woodshed is further than the existing house. I think it is in a neighborhood of forty-five feet or something. I mean, if the board is comfortable with issuing a variance for the woodshed based on its location, love to tell the structures, the access from the house, to have that added to the site plan as a condition of the approval prior to using stamps, so we don't come that, that much. I mean, just saves us some time, you're going to entertain.
If we were to entertain it, what I propose is we do it two steps. We give you for the main house. And then we give you, come back next time with an exact number for the woodshed. And I don't think that would impact.
That's what I would.
That's why.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
Okay, so, okay. Does anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments?
Can't hear them.
I, I take it they're both shaking their head no. Thank you.
Nothing further. Nothing, nothing further.
Okay, okay.
Could you please explain to me, just to me now, as to why the fact that they're increasing the surface area doesn't satisfy section three ninety-one?
I'm gonna defer that to Sarah again.
Yes. It is our position that three ninety-one is not applicable to this application. Whether before the planning board, whether before the ZBA, we are not dealing with a prior non-conforming use of a building or a structure in this scenario. So that is our position. I feel like I addressed it thoroughly a few weeks ago. I think it's been addressed here. The only thing would be the variances. And yeah, I think that the, the shed though is a side yard variance, correct?
Yes, correct.
But why is it a non-conforming use when it is a non-conforming? Because the law passed, the law.
Howard, Howard, can I let you take that offline with Sarah and have the debate offline, please?
Well, this was an interpretation that we want, not after it's done. I don't know.
Well, we can still have an interpretation. You can make that request, I think, for our next meeting.
And then we can provide a full analysis if that's what the town wants us to do. Um, I, I do think we have addressed the law that you have, the code that is currently in existence and why a non-conforming use with a residential property in a residential district, in a residential zone, um is not applicable.
Nothing to do with being residential has to do with the footprint.
I, I understand that you keep saying that, Howard. I just think that.
We're going around in circles, and I'm saying one thing, and you're saying.
We'll agree to disagree, but that's the, you're.
That's why it's for you, the board, the ZBA.
Well, let's get the full board involved and a full input from our legal counsel. Okay, as well as the, uh, our consultants, and then have that discussion at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I don't disagree with you for interpretation. I just think we gotta have the right material set up to have that discussion, that's all. Okay, with that said, can I have a motion close the public hearing then?
Motion.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Fletcher, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So now the question is, uh, are there any other questions for the applicant? Or comments, reviews? Okay. You know, in a way, I personally would say you could decrease the conformity by attempting to do something with the, you know, increasing the lot size by taking, uh, you know, getting a slimmer of land from the neighboring property.
We are decreasing the conformity by an extra foot.
By an extra foot, not, but you could totally decrease it. There's, there's an alternate.
Making that a condition for approval?
Haven't said that yet. Okay. Haven't said that yet. Okay. I mean, one of the ways uh to look at why you grant a variance, is there an alternate way of achieving what you're looking for? The alternate way, my mind is by obtaining more property to get it, so it's totally non-conforming. That said, Peter.
I mean, it's kind of, the kind of bootstrap to her, um, with the work they've done here, so, um.
You're comfortable with it?
I, I have.
Fletcher?
So am I.
Okay, then, uh.
And just, just for the facts and the findings of fact, I just would like to point out, um, that the character, the neighborhood, I think that finds in favor of granting it, given that the character will not be impacted or changed. Um, as far as whether or not the variance is substantial, a thirty-two foot variance going from seventy-five to forty-three could be considered substantial. I don't think that would be detrimental to your findings, either for or against granting it. As far as adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, I think that the applicant, in our opinion, has complied, has done everything that the wetlands advisor has wanted them to do. I think that is pertinent to your review, and that these variances would not cause any further adverse effect or impact, especially since they're moving it further out of the buffer. I'm only adding this, because if you're going to make a motion orally, I just want to make sure we're thorough. And whether it's been self-created, um, I think that can go either way as well. The wetlands buffer law changed after the structure was built. So I think that they are hindered by a change in the law. But you're also hindered because you want to expand it. So just to go through the five factors as far as the analysis is concerned. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I have a secret motion that this is a type two action then. I'll make the motion. Sorry. Motion by John, seconded by Fletcher, all in favor? Aye. Okay. And I'll leave one, it, it up to one of you two to make a uh motion to grant them a side yard, uh, south side yard variance for thirty-two feet for the uh structure.
I'll approve.
Sorry.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Fletcher, all in favor? Aye.
And they're gonna come back for the shed.
We're leaving the application open, so you don't need to reapply. So come back with new numbers, or new numbers, with actual numbers for the shed, take it up in the next meeting. So I think you're good to go then, from us. Ready to go back to the planning board?
Um.
Contingent, they're all.
They were contingent approvals. Okay, yes. I think it'd be for the planning board, again, the beginning of the month.
Where is this shed?
It's on the, on, you know.
It's on the southwest corner, because the conversation was that way trash could make its, uh, they pick up from the house. So we want to be able to give them a turn around here.
This is the line right there?
Correct.
They're almost put it.
Right next to the garage, right? We just moved the shed by the garage. Yeah, this is, this seems funny to me.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, uh.
I don't know, Paul, I, I'm not always privy to the planning plans. This is, this is. So, um. What we had, yeah.
We can move the shed. I mean, honestly, it's not gonna be.
They're gonna ask you to anyway.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
We should just take the shed out.
We can do it. Let's be proactive about it.
Let's put it by the garage. I mean, it's gonna make sense to put it up here anyway. You can get to the wood just as easy. It's, it's, it's feeling better than you want it.
Okay.
Perfect. So that's back for that.
We all said.
We can close this.
No, we can close it out.
Yeah, you don't need to come back next month then. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your construction.
Thank you, sir.
Wendy?
Thank you. Good to meet you all.
Litigate.
Thank you for your patience and understanding.
My pleasure.
Close the meeting.
I'm.
Thank you for your.
Motion, pause.
Motion by Peter, seconded by John, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Were you in relation to Ambrose Park?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm.